Call a meeting to order. We'll begin with pleasure and allegiance. I invite you to join us. Roll call, please.
Strand.
Here.
Garrick.
Here.
Grinberg.
Here.
Pepcorn.
Here.
Mahoney.
Here. Well, we've had an interesting week. I want to thank Chief Todd for his work in solving altercation or disagreement by a couple of parties in town. And I think everybody understands we're a place where people like to get along. And thank you, Chief, for your role in that. Library. The last two sessions of the library is meet and greet your city department leaders. It's our scheduled for August 1st and August 10th at the main library. Julian Gold, program coordinator for the homeless outreach, will discuss homeless outreach. And she has a great story to tell. I think if people haven't heard her presentation, it's an interesting way of managing a problem in the city in a very good fashion. Also, we will have Gladys Ray Shelter discussed at the August 1st, excuse me, at the August 1st event. And then Dan Molly, community development administrator, will discuss Planning Department on August 10th event. And Dan's going to have a variety of things and interesting things going on, planning neighborhoods and what he's doing in regards to that. So I think for people that may find of interest to find out what these department heads do. The police, the Fargo-Cass County Public Health, State of North Dakota, and Sanford Health are exploring the funding of a mobile detox unit in Fargo that could respond to calls to pick up people and transport them to detox or take them from the hospital to detox. This mobile detox unit would save the police department many man-hours considering two officers are sent in most of these calls and transports. Water utility. The water utility plant construction is about two-thirds complete. The neighbors would know that. The project is on schedule and expected to be in operation in the summer of 2018. The first two reverse osmosis skids were recently delivered at the construction site. Each skid can produce about 2 million gallons of water per day. That's a lot of water, isn't it, Tony? Currently, the roof membrane is being installed and exterior brick is being placed. The construction objective is to have the building closed by winter. Now, it's interesting that the summer, that water towers at north and south are now being reconditioned. Both projects have gone well with quality and timeline perspective. The south tower went back into service last Friday. The north tower is expected to be done in mid-August. They also have what they call tower mixers in these water towers. And what that does is prevent ice damage here. So in the wintertime, they freeze. And with these mixers, then it doesn't freeze. And Tony, that had an adverse effect on the walls, right?
Right, that saved the walls, yeah.
And lastly, we have kind of these interesting things that come up to us. You'll see on the screen a horse. And Jan Stark, who lives in Sweden, shared this with the mayor. She has her daughters, who are breeders of pony trotters in Sweden. She said her daughters name all the mayors after cities in South Europe, and all the stallions are after, named after cities in North America. Attached to the message was this photo of the horse, which is called Fargo, a four-year stallion, who she says has been most amazing in his first two seasons with six wins out of 20 starts. Commissioner Pepcorn says it's just like the bison herd, five-time national champions, right there.
Bet.
Well, it's always nice that people think of us, even in Sweden. So we've become international as a city, yeah. Is there a motion to approve the order of agenda to continue an item 43B to the 5:15 meeting on August 14th and adding an item at the end of the regular agenda that concedes with the awarding of the 19th Avenue Reconstruction Project? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Gendrick, a motion and second by Strand. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the July 17, 2017 regular meeting?
So moved.
Commissioner Garrick, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Pepcorn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So we will go to regular agenda.
Do we approve consent?
Oh, I'm sorry. Approve/consent agenda? Roll call vote, please.
I'll make a motion to approve.
And I'll second it.
I thought we were already there, okay. Motioned and seconded, roll call vote.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Garrick.
Yes.
Strand.
Yes.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Mahoney.
Aye. So we have an update on the Cass County, Cass-Clay Food Commission restructuring the Cass-Clay Food Partners. Kim Lepetsky and Megan Midroll are going to explain this to us. We have something going on here. We're changing life on us, or what?
We're just giving you an update.
Have we heard a lot from the chickens? Has that worked out okay?
I think it's going pretty good. We haven't had any complaints that I'm aware of, so.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, good evening. My name is Kim Lepetsky from Fargo-Cass Public Health, and this is Megan Miradall. She's our project coordinator for the Cass-Clay Food Commission. Because it's been a few years since we formed the Cass-Clay Food Commission, we just thought it might be beneficial to provide a brief update on some of our food systems work to this point and then some of our plans moving forward. And we appreciate the opportunity to be able to present this evening. So what we're going to do is, I'm just going to give a very brief history of the Cass-Clay Food Systems Initiative and talk a little bit about the work of the Food Commission. And then we're in the process of restructuring to the Cass-Clay Food Partners. Megan's going to explain that and talk about the future direction of our group. So the Cass-Clay Food Systems Initiative was formed in 2010 in response to this national Good Food Movement, which encouraged communities to, one, work to improve access to healthy food for all residents, and, two, to increase the production and consumption of locally grown food. So Extension and Public Health on both sides of the river got together and formed the Cass-Clay Food Systems Initiative. And over the years, we've been doing a lot of different activities, projects, and interventions in this area. Then in 2013, we worked with MetroCog to write the Metropolitan Food Systems Plan, which provides a baseline assessment and a framework for our work moving forward. We presented this plan to the Fargo City Commission and obtained a resolution of support in 2013. And then around the same time, improving access to healthy food was included as one of the main health objectives in the Fargo Goal 2030 Comprehensive Plan. So the first recommendation of the Metropolitan Food Systems Plan was to form a council or some type of commission to work on food systems issues. So in late 2014, we formed the Cass-Clay Food Commission through a joint powers agreement between the city of Fargo and Clay County. And the purpose of the group has been to advise policymakers and key officials in the Fargo-Moorhead Metropolitan Area, as well as Cass and Clay County, on how to assure that residents have access to safe, nutritious, and affordable food. When this group was formed, we visited the Fargo City Commission again, and Mike Williams was appointed as the first Fargo representative on the commission. And currently, Commissioner Strand serves on our Food Commission as the Fargo rep. So this is the makeup of the commission. We've got 11 voting members on there. Six are from the six local jurisdictions, and they're appointed by each jurisdiction. We have five at-large members that apply to be on the commission, and they are experts in different areas of our food system. We also have on our commission ex-official members, which are members from the two health departments, as well as our current steering committee and Adam Altenberg from MetroCog. So we held our first commission meeting in March of 2015. And at one of those first meetings, since food systems can encompass a large area of different areas and issues, urban agriculture was identified as the first priority area issue to work on since some of the local jurisdictions were dealing with urban egg issues at the time. And in June of 2015, we conducted an online community survey of community residents to determine which urban agriculture issues were most important to them. Having access to community gardens and gardening was the most important thing that came out, as well as a whole host of other topic areas. So over the next two years, the Food Commission has been working on creating blueprint documents focusing on urban agriculture topics. These are documents that jurisdictions can use as resources if they're interested in addressing some of these issues in their communities. And the blueprints provide background information. They discuss the pros and cons of the different issues, list out stipulations to consider if a community is going to allow this practice in their city or their county, and then has example ordinances from other communities, both regionally and across the U.S. And for example, when we did the backyard chicken keeping ordinance, we used the backyard chicken keeping blueprint because it had a lot of the research already done and the stipulations to include in that ordinance. So to date, we have 10 different blueprints developed. Nine of them have been approved by the commission, and the gleaning one we will be voting on in September. We do have these in hard copy, if you're interested in those, but you can also find them online at our Cass-Clay Food Partners website. Or contact one of us, and we can get those to you.
All right. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the restructure that Kim mentioned. So as she said, we are now no longer called the Cass-Clay Food Systems Initiative. We had shifted to the Cass-Clay Food Partners. And kind of the why behind this is, as you've heard in the last seven years, there's been a lot of action and direct impacts that have been made through the work of the initiative. So it isn't really an initiative anymore. We also have been thinking about what will best serve the needs of our community and meeting our mission. And so we're looking at the present and future of our food community and how we can be structured in a way to do this. And then we also have had a lot of interest in these issues that we've been discussing within the Cass-Clay Food Systems Initiative. And in order for it to be truly impactful and sustainable, we understand that this must be a community-driven effort. And so we've been thinking about how we can create more opportunities for the community to be involved in this work. So the goals of the restructure are recognizing and embracing that there has been a strong evolution of the Cass-Clay Food Systems Initiative and our local food community, and we really want to serve the needs of this community. We want to effectively engage interested community members in this mission and then facilitate connections between the policymakers and constituents to make actions. And so this is our new logo, the Cass-Clay Food Partners. So a new change and a little bit more definition behind the work we do. So everything you see coming here forward will be under this logo and this name. And within the Cass-Clay Food Partners, we have three distinct entities that are deeply connected as well. So Kim already mentioned the Cass-Clay Food Commission and the Cass-Clay Food Partners Steering Committee. And we're also forming a new subgroup of the Cass-Clay Food Partners called the Cass-Clay Food Action Network, which I'll explain in a little bit more detail. But just overarching between these three groups, what we're trying to achieve is building a strong, healthy, and vibrant food system. Our mission is to improve all levels of our community food system, to assure that residents have access to safe, nutritious, affordable, and culturally-based food. And then that is our vision, that all members have these needs. We've also articulated the values behind the Cass-Clay Food Partners, and these are stated here. We believe in an inclusive, integrated, and equitable food system, a food system that's economically and ecologically resilient, a food system where all cultures are respected, a food system that supports and enhances quality of life for all citizens, and a food system that fosters successful entrepreneurship and sustainable innovation. So our statement of approach in terms of how we plan to accomplish these goals and carry out the values, the first is shared leadership, recognizing that this cannot be held within a single entity or individual, but it must be shared by the broader community, that citizens need to be involved, as well as key stakeholders in our food system, to take action. We hope to foster teamwork and shared responsibility, recognizing the necessity and power of the collective community to truly carry out this mission, and that this has to be done through a systematic approach, that nothing in our food system happens in isolation, so we need to think and operate at a systems level. So here's just revisiting briefly that slide, so I can just share a little bit more about each of these groups. So this is the Cass-Clay Food Partners Steering Committee. It's an advisory committee comprised of government organizations and food systems experts that are working on the management and organization of the partners. So the bolded members that are listed up there, Fargo-Cass and Clay County Public Health, NDSU Extension in both Cass and Clay Counties, and MetroCog are the core sustaining members of the steering committee. In addition to that, we have an area planner, myself being the project coordinator, a blueprint writer, and then we allow up to five food systems experts to guide the direction of this work. I won't re-discuss this because Kim already mentioned, but this is the Cass-Clay Food Commission, in which Commissioner Strand sits on behalf of the city of Fargo. And then the last and the newest addition to the Cass-Clay Food Partners is the Cass-Clay Food Action Network. And the goal behind this is that we recognize that there has been tremendous positive momentum in our local food community. We've seen a lot of growth in farmers' markets, community gardens, local farmers. Our new co-op is open. And so the goal of this is to really leverage that momentum and increase more connections in order to meet the mission of the Cass-Clay Food Partners. And so the idea behind this is really creating a platform for engagement. The Cass-Clay Food Commission meets bi-monthly, beginning in January throughout the year. The Cass-Clay Food Action Network will meet on those off months. And this is really intended to be an exciting place for people to get interested and involved in our local food community. In a similar way that 1 Million Cups has energized the entrepreneurial and startup community, that is the goal behind the Cass-Clay Food Action Network, to become a regular meeting place for individuals, entities, and organizations who want to be involved in this work. So moving forward, this is the first of six presentations that we're doing for all the jurisdictions between now and September. We'll be presenting the final version of this to the Cass-Clay Food Commission on September 12th. And then moving forward, we'll be organizing the launch of the Cass-Clay Food Action Network in November. And then the future focus of our work more broadly, we've kind of wrapped up the urban agriculture blueprint creation. That isn't to say that the work is done in urban agriculture, but we'll be shifting our focus more from blueprints and discussion to the issues of food access. So with that, thank you for your time and happy to answer any questions, if there are any.
Mr. Pepcorn.
I have a question. Do you have any grocers on any of your committees?
There have been grocers involved in the initial formation of the initiative. The produce manager for Prairie Roots Co-op has been actively involved, but there are not any grocery owners or managers at this time.
I guess to me, they're, they should be included somewhere, because to me, they're the, usually, most people that are there, they get most of their food. And so, and I think they could also be encouraged to use local products and things like that. I'm sure they do already, but anyway, I would suggest that, because to me, that's, they're involved on a daily basis, so, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Strand.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, this is, I have to commend you, both Megan and Kim, and your leadership for what you do. And this is one of the commissions, I think, that I'm having my eyes most widely opened. Who, you know, even though I grew up on a farm and we're in this agricultural, broader agricultural community, we don't always think of the folks who don't have food or don't have access to food or who can't afford food. And things, just simple things, like even your ugly food initiative, which I didn't understand at first, is a way to get food to people. So I commend you for your work and for helping with hunger and reducing waste and affordability and self-sufficiency and so on, and creative planning for the city. But my challenge is to, to you is to, don't be so timid. You've got some really great concepts in the works, and I can't wait till you bring more of them to the city commission level so that we can act on them, discuss them, vet them, and implement them, because it'll have a profound effect on so many people. So I'm looking forward to that.
Thank you, Commissioner Strand.
Very nice report. We think you're doing great work. Keep it up.
Thank you.
With Commissioner Strand, continue to go forward. Commissioner Grinberg.
Question. Are you related to Rosemarie Mirado?
Grandmother, yes.
They almost have the same birthdays, too.
My goodness.
It's a small world.
Thank you very much.
We'll move on to public hearings. Osigood Site Edition, 6th Addiction, 4575 45th Street South, approval recommended by Planning Commission, and 7617. It's a zoning change from multi-dwelling residential to public and institutional with a conditional overlay on Lot 6, Block 1. First reading of the rezoning ordinance. Nicole Crotford to explain.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. So this request in front of you tonight is for rezoning to public institutional, and we've added a conditional overlay. The main premise of this rezoning request is to allow for more opportunities for different signage. And since this is a church, the P.I., Public Institutional, seems to be a most suitable zoning request. So it happened to be coincidental that the zoning requests match the land use in a better format. So it's a little bit of a map cleanup. A church, just for your records, can go in any zoning district, but we like them to be in a commercial or public institutional zoning district if preferable. So it's a good opportunity to clean that up. And so basically, they just want the opportunity to do electronic messaging sign. This is an example of their sign. They actually are just going to change out their middle piece there. We did put a conditional overlay because that public institutional does allow, as a use by right, things like industrial manufacturing. And since this is close to residential housing, we thought that might not be a good location, so we put a conditional overlay on top of that. So it was unanimously approved by the Planning Commission and staff recommends approval.
Is anyone present who wishes to speak to this zoning change? Anyone present who wishes to speak? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and approved, or moved and seconded, any comments? Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Strand.
Yes.
Garrick.
Yes.
Mahoney.
Aye. Item number two, Osigood Townsite, 15th Edition, 5050 47th Street South, approval recommended by Planning Commission, 7617. A zoning change from limited commercial to limited commercial with a planned unit development overlay. First reading of the rezoning ordinance, a planned unit development master land use plan as well. Nicole Crotford to explain.
Yes, so this is the item that the applicant has requested to continue. And his main reason for continuing, he's out of town today, so he'd like to be present for the public hearing.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Garrick.
Yes.
Strand.
Yes.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Mahoney.
Aye. Item C, Dewitts Edition, 308 9th Avenue North, approval recommended by Planning Commission on 7617. A zoning change from a multi-dwelling residential to a single-dwelling residential with a planned unit development overlay. First reading rezoning and a planned unit development master land use. Nicole Crotford to explain as well.
Yes, and I thought it would be a good example to show you that we're seeing more of these types of cases at Planning Commission as well, where a planned unit development might be the best use. So you'll see more planned unit developments come in front of you. And this is an example where there was an existing house. That house is no longer there. It just so happens, back many years ago, it was zoned MR2 prior to this land development code. When you look at the MR2 standards today, it doesn't really, it's not really conducive to single-family housing. The city's goal is single-family housing, and so the SR5 zoning district will work, as you can tell, it's a teeny-tiny lot, and the SR5 zoning district will work for density standards, but it doesn't work for the rear setback. And so therefore, the planned unit development becomes an overlay that can be placed on this property to allow for some, a little bit more flexibility. And so as a result, here's an example. A master land use plan is what goes along with the PUD overlay. It gives the city an opportunity to get a little bit more specific on their request because they're basically moving a setback that would otherwise be allowed by right. And so this was unanimously approved by the Planning Commission, and we'd be glad to answer any questions.
Is anyone present who wishes to speak to this zoning change? Is anyone present who wishes to speak? Hearing none. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Strand, motion. Commissioner Grinberg, seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Strand.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to commend and thank the Habitat for Humanity folks. I see some in the audience here, and you're doing good work, and this all adds up. So it's just a pleasure to see these come together, these opportunities, and to have the benefit of a family that will be living there and be sweat-equating their way into it as well. So thank you.
Thank you as well. Roll call vote, please.
Strand.
Yes.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Garrick.
Yes.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Mahoney.
Aye. Item D, Section 5307, Federal Transportation Administration Grant Preliminary Program of Projects for 2017. Transit, whoops, it's not going to be Julie.
No. I got sent again.
Okay.
So, Ms. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you. As you know, Federal Transit Administration every year sets aside funds for transit use for each of the cities. Julie had submitted the program for projects on, I lost my date, July 17th, which does require a public hearing. So we're just looking for approval to submit and execute on the $2,397,121 that was provided to the city of Fargo for transit use.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Grinberg, Garrick. Any discussion or questions of?
I got a question. Is there a local share?
On this, depends on the project that it's being used for, so there may be, but that's already been factored into our budget. So if there is any local share, that's already something that you guys would have approved for our program of projects.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Garrick.
Yes.
Strand.
Yes.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Mahoney.
Item E, application filed by BNG Holdings, required for property tax exemption for the expansion of project located at 3285 47th Street South, which the applicant will use in the operation of merchant services, including processing, payment, gateway, integration software, point-of-sale technology, and website design. Ken Costin to explain.
Hi, Commissioners, I am pinch-hitting for Ben Hushka today. He's on vacation, so happy to do that. BNG Holdings has submitted an application for a property tax exemption. It's a five-year, 100% exemption. And the Tax Exempt Review Committee has reviewed that and had a discussion with the applicant. They do have primary sector designation. They met the point scale system for award of an exemption, and there are no policy concerns. And this particular business is in the payment technology and services area. So committee is, the committee is recommending that you consider this for an approval.
Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak? I'm sorry. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak regarding this application pilot? Is anybody wishing to speak? If not, now there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Commissioner Pepcorn?
Okay, I'll just kind of summarize it real quick, and some of the members were here, but basically, it's a local tech company. It was, some NDSU students are actually the founders of it. It's a booming company. This will allow them to expand their business, and I would say that, from what they said in the application, they're high-paying jobs. There's, they're all above $20 an hour, and so I think it's a, it's an excellent project, and we definitely want to keep them in the city of Fargo. Thank you.
Commissioner Garrick.
Is the applicant here? What's your name again?
My name is Tyler Beekler.
And how old is your company? How long has it been here in Fargo?
10 years.
And in those 10 years, you started with how many employees, and how many do you have now?
We started with just the three of us, myself and two business partners, and we are currently at 42 and growing.
And what rate of, you said something, how many people are you going to hire if you got this exemption?
With this exemption? This exemption means a lot as far as us doing our building and being able to hire in the future. We will continue hiring. It would just be at a lot slower pace, so this probably allows us to hire probably another 10 to 15 employees over just the next couple of years alone that we wouldn't be able to without it.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you for growing in Fargo. That's awesome. And there are a lot of companies like you in, are coming to Fargo because we have a And there are a lot of companies like you in, are coming to Fargo because we have a good atmosphere here as well, so.
Absolutely.
The, the reason I'm gonna vote no against this is not because of your company. It has nothing to do with that. I'm, I'm glad that you're here, I'm glad that you're growing. The reason I'm gonna vote no is that we have a ton of companies just like yours in the City of Fargo that are struggling to get by as well. And whenever we offer one, one incentive to some, to one company, not to another, we are not only helping your business over theirs, we're also harming that company if they're renting a space, or if they own a, a building or something like that, they end up paying higher taxes. So I wanted just to explain that I support your company. I hope you grow here in Fargo, uh, for, forever. Uh, but there's a reason why I'm, I'm voting no.
Your excuse. Thank you. Any other discussion or question? Commissioner Strand?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, one of the things I'd like to note here is, and I'm, I really commend the Commission and the Tax, Tax Exempt Review Committee for building into your evaluation processes the wage scales of new jobs created. In this instance, there will be, as I see it, fifteen jobs, uh, created that are well above fifteen dollars an hour, and as much as eight jobs that are over thirty-five dollars an hour. Only three are under thirteen dollars an hour. I'd like to see that at zero at some point, but that's, I understand. But I'm, I, I, I think that's a great measure for us going forward, that when people are accessing public assistance and, and, and incentives and exemptions, that they're paying a living wage. So it's a great criteria here, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. And remind the Commission that we're having a large technological company leaving. Help is going to be leaving the city. So it is very competitive market, and it's hard to hold people in. So we're glad you're expanding, and we wish the company that made the decision to pull the other company out would think about staying in Fargo.
Really quick, Mayor, hold on a second.
Commissioner Garrick?
And to your point, John, uh, it is good to have that wage built into the, the scale. It also needs to be built into the scale that if that amount of employees aren't hired, or if they're hired at a lower rate, that we're made aware of that, then we can claw back some of this exemption then. Because we're basing our decision on those numbers, and many times in the past, companies have not hired those amount of people, or they've not grown at, at that certain, uh, speed, and they still got a hundred percent or all the exemption that they were promised, so.
Mr. Chairman, we do review, uh, we don't review every one of them every year, but we randomly select, and so we make sure that they do that. And we do, uh, monitor to, to make sure that they're, they're fulfilling what they, what they put on, on the list, so. I do agree, we could maybe do a little better job of that, uh, but I, but we do do that at this time. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Garrick?
No.
Mahoney?
Aye. Item F, application filed by one oh twenty-three Flats for the payment in lieu of tax exemption for a project located at ten twenty-three First Avenue South, which applicant will use in the operation of rental property. Ken Costin to explain.
Yeah, this particular application, uh, had been received, uh, back in February, and had been approved, and it was been approved by the Commission and the Tax Exempt Review Committee. The plan was modified to a certain extent, uh, and it was changed from a ten-plex to a fourteen-plex. So basically, it was run through that tax exempt process again, and, uh, the, uh, it meets the, the policy for the downtown apartment buildings, and they're suggesting a five-year, one-hundred percent, and a five-year, seventy-five percent payment in lieu of tax, uh, as a modification to the original plan. So you've seen this one before.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak, Commissioner, regarding to this pilot? Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Is the applicant here present? Okay. I may have, uh, we'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Can I add?
Commissioner Pepcorn?
Okay, I'll just go real quick. So my son graduated from college, and so he got a job, thank the Lord. And so he's looking for an apartment, so I went with him last week. He wants an apartment downtown. And so for a single, I'll just, I won't mention any names, but for a single-bedroom apartment in downtown Fargo, it's eleven hundred bucks. So Tony, you might be happy to hear this, this is the last one of these I'll support. Because fortunately, people want to live downtown, and they're willing to pay more. So now, to John's point, we are gonna have to make a concerted effort for low-income housing in the downtown. That's the key. Not, so to me, this is literally the last one that I will support, because now the market has flipped, and people are willing to pay. So now for us to be subsidizing that no longer makes sense. However, we do have to make a concerted effort for low-income housing. Otherwise, it's gonna, uh, right now, it, it, there won't be any. And so I think, uh, John had an excellent point. We have to find out what is low income, what, what is the rent rates that we will require for low-income housing? Because that's the next step. And, and they do have TIFs that we can target just for that. And so, all right, that's the end of my spiel, but I thought I would make Tony's day. Since he's wearing a green shirt, I thought that would make him a little bit happy, so.
Makes me happy.
Okay. Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Grinberg?
You can't just, you said we've seen this before, just refresh your memory of how we've seen this.
Well, I just have the notes from, from Ben Hushka. I believe this was brought through the Tax Exempt Review Committee in February.
I've been here.
I think so.
Yep, yep.
Yes, I think, and it was all approved, but then the plan was modified and changed, so they felt it.
It went to fourteen from ten, and we had approved the ten already, so now it's just coming.
Mr. Chairman, when it's, when it's modified a significant amount, then it has to go through, even though it was a similar project, they modified it quite a bit, so then they have to go through the process again.
Mr. Strand?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this came through our Commission February thirteenth and passed three to two with Commissioner Garrick and I opposed. The discussion, as I recall, was mostly about affordability, and whether or not if somebody's coming to the public troughs for assistance, whether we should have, or whether there's any criteria, uh, or, or, or value to having affordability built into their approach for apartments. And, and I'll just say, generally speaking, I'm, I'm not a big fan of pilots' payments in lieu of taxes for apartments. And if they're gonna be for downtown, I think that we need to start requiring affordability components into, into their, their, their work plan. Because we, we do have an issue of, of people being forced out of our downtown that have been in our downtown, and we need, we need, you know, I, and I, I just think that it's not our job as a city governance to help somebody's profit margins improve. If there's a public component like affordable housing or affordable rental space for businesses, I'm more inclined to think that's for the greater public good. So I'm going to be consistent with my vote on February thirteenth on, on that basis.
Any other discussion?
Just real quick.
Commissioner Earring?
And I don't know if David, the mayor, you can answer this. This is the first exemption that I think I've seen since the new law. Uh, if it's over five years, it has to go to school and the county. Where, did they weigh in on this? Do we know? Does this go to them after we vote on it, or how does that work?
Ken, do you have that?
You know, I, I don't have that information. Uh, Ben Hushka would probably be the expert on that.
I'm under the impression we voted it goes to them, and they have to vote it.
Okay.
Approve or deny it, or.
Okay.
This is maybe a stretch, but the law doesn't go into effect till tomorrow.
Oh, is that true? Okay.
Solve that problem.
There you go.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Strand?
No.
Garrick?
No.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Mayor, I did have one follow-up comment to Commissioner Garrick. Uh, the budget that you saw today incorporated some additional funds for auditing some of these TIFs and pilots and such. So know that, that you've added some administrative cost into implementing the policy. But I just wanted you to know that we did increase it slightly so that we have money accessible for that purpose.
Thank you. Item G, transfer class FAA alcohol beverage license from Lone Star Steakhouse, in business Lone Star Steakhouse at fifteen thirty-five University Drive South, to David Schlossman, uh, David Schlossman, denial recommended by Liquor Board Control on seven nineteen seventeen. And it's considered a six-month extension of the FAA license to Lone Star Steakhouse. Steve Sprague to explain.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. So this is a little bit of an unusual circumstance for us. Um, rarely do we get an applicant that comes before the Liquor Board or the City Commission requesting to transfer a license that they then would hold to transfer to another individual or party later. And that was the case here. Um, Mr. Schlossman, um, passed the, the tests that we do as far as, um, the background and the check and the, and the, um, other checks that we do. Um, however, he wasn't intending to run a restaurant with this license, and so, uh, that's why the Commission, or the Liquor Board, voted to deny the transfer to Mr. Schlossman, but, uh, extended that license. Uh, they're not currently operating, so extend that license for six months to give him a chance to try to move it to somebody that would actually use the license. So I don't know if there's any questions about how we handle that.
Did he buy it back?
I can answer that. Um, the FAA license is not limited, uh, so that was another reason why we were kind of hesitant, because anyone could come here and apply for it a thousand times, and there, and there's no limit to that. So he was using this license as we see it, as a carrot, to later sell some rental space at, at a different location. But we didn't know what that location looked like, uh, so there were a lot of questions to be answered that, that just couldn't have been at that point. So by all means, when he has a space, he'll likely get this license very easily. It's just at this point, it, it just didn't work.
Well, and I, I, I think that to kind of tag on to Commissioner Garrick, I, I see this transfer going from Lone Star to whoever would be, um, running the restaurant. And, and Mr. Schlossman would just be the one that would rent the space. And he did mention that it is a competitive market, um, that, uh, you know, that there, he's got some clients, potential clients that are weighing West Fargo versus Fargo versus Morehead. And so we kind of felt like maybe to give him a little bit more time to work out a deal so that, uh, you know, the city ends up being the winner in this.
Is anyone wishes to address the City Commission regarding this transfer? Anybody wishing to address the City in regards to this transfer? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the suggested motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Now, I'm understanding this would be, do you have an extension, basically?
It would be a denial of the application.
Extension and give an extension.
Yep.
You're combining that in one motion?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Strand?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I'm just, maybe, uh, Steve or, or Commissioner Garrick could answer this, but is there a value to, to, uh, sitting on this license and to transferring it, or, and cannot new people just get it anyway and apply for it like everybody else does? Or I'm, I'm just kind of confused about this process.
And that question came up too, to the Liquor Board. What's, what's the, what's the purpose, or what's the value of this? So the city doesn't have a cap on FAs, and any applicant could come to the city and get an FAA license for a hundred thousand dollars, provided that they are a qualified applicant. Um, in this case, I would imagine that, uh, Mr. Schlossman has worked out some kind of an arrangement, um, to broker a deal between Lone, Lone Star and whoever would eventually end up with this license. So it would probably be.
He could deep, deep discount it, John, to get somebody to come in the restaurant if he wanted to, and then they wouldn't have to buy it on market.
Transfer fee is equal to the annual fee, so instead of paying a hundred thousand dollars to get a new license, they could, they could pay seventeen hundred dollars and move that license to somebody else, so.
And would that be for six months then?
That's what we.
Depending on how much remaining of the year's licensing?
Well, that's what we, uh, we put in for the recommendation was a six-month period. At the end of that time, I would see that the recommendation coming back to this board would be to let that license come back to the city.
But to his point, it was renewed already, so they already paid their yearly fee.
Yes, they did.
This license is still good until then, so you're, you're correct in that.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Garrick?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye. Item H, application by R and R, Reece Riley Bistro, for a class GH license at twenty-six fifty-three Forty-Fifth South. Denial recommended by Liquor Control. Steve Sprague to explain.
And this one too was, uh, kind of an interesting situation. The, the applicant, um, had a, a little bit of a, of a credit history problem. Um, it was in twenty-twelve she had bankruptcy. I don't think the board was too hung up on that, but, um, she does have a pending, um, potential felony charge. Um, and so rather than issuing the license and then, um, you know, if, if the process, the legal process continued through, we would have to go back through then, and, and if it ended up being charged out as a felony, we would have to go through the revocation process. And so, um, on a split vote, uh, the Liquor Board recommended a denial of a, on a three to two vote.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in regards to this liquor license? Anybody wishing to speak? If not, can I have a motion?
Timing on the felony conviction?
Yeah, so at the Liquor Board, she, uh, indicated that she, that the, she had a hearing scheduled for August, which was one of the reasons that we kind of thought, well, if we just waited thirty more days, we would have a resolution. Subsequent to that time, she's come to me and told me that that got postponed to September, so, um, and, and it sounds like, um, it's been moved back a couple of times already, so.
I'll take a stab at this. We move delay action on this until the first meeting in October.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, the.
Discussion?
One of the things that we can do, if we deny it, she can come back and apply again. And it wasn't just one felony, it was two felonies. And so that was the thing that concerned at least myself, I think some of the other board members. That's, that's, it's not a misdemeanor. It was two felonies, so that was my, that was the reason I voted to deny it.
And I'm gonna end up changing my vote too. I'm gonna vote, I'm gonna vote against it. Um, there was, you know, revelations like that. This has been pushed back a number of times. The reason I wasn't opposed to it initially was because she holds a license in Minnesota, right? So she has licenses elsewhere, but then in, in further conversations, hearing that it's got pushed back again and again, she can always come back to Liquor Control Board. It would be a delay of a matter of a couple of weeks from our board to this board. Um, so I don't, I don't see a need to continue it at any point. She can come to us at the meeting, and it'll be, at the most, a month before she would get her license after that.
In essence, we're saying the same thing, so I withdraw my motion to, and just.
Second or withdraw, Oswald? Can I have a motion to deny?
Move to deny.
Is there a second? Commissioner Strand?
I'll second it.
Are you understanding the motion?
Yes.
Mr. Strand?
If I could, um, Mr. Sprague, uh, maybe you can help me understand this, is if somebody's applying, do we require them to disclaim if they've been charged with a felony or other crimes, or if they've been found guilty? Because there's a big difference there.
Yes, there is. There is a, you're absolutely right, there is a big difference between, um, being charged with a crime and, and actually being convicted of a crime. Um, in the application, we request any information that they, that they can. Um, the real enlightenment comes when the police department does their background check, and that's, that's when this came forward, was during the background check.
And what is our criteria for applicants to indicate that they've been charged with a felony? Or to indicate if they've been found guilty of a felony?
Um, convicted.
Convicted, okay.
Well, convicted of any crime, well, not any crimes, but yeah, felony, yep.
Commissioner Strand question, if they were innocent of the charge, uh, denial is because if you would have to give them the license, what's the difficulty in taking it away?
There's a public hearing required. I, I believe it's a sixty-day notice. Um, there's, there's just, uh, uh, steps of formality of that.
Well, in essence, they could be running their bar or whatever, you know, up to thirty, sixty, ninety days before you could remove it from them.
Correct.
So Liquor Commission says no, just so they don't have to go through that?
That's, that was one of the reasons.
And if you have a felony, you can't own a bar?
That's correct.
Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Garrick?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye. We're gonna have Ken Costin back up here again. Resolution providing for the issuance of revenue bond by Colorado Health Facilities on behalf of the Evangelical Lutheran Good Samaritan Society, continued from seven seventeen regular meeting. Ken Costin to explain.
Yes, Commissioner, this is a standard IRS requirement, uh, under this type of bonding. This Colorado Health Facilities Authority is gonna issue some bonds in an aggregate amount of about a hundred and six million dollars, and then spread those proceeds across the country. And they're gonna land on a project in Fargo at forty-five oh two Thirty-seventh Avenue South to help, uh, construct a, or reconstruct a, um, senior care facility. So with regard to this type of bonds, a public hearing is required, so we ask that you have that public hearing. Take a comment on that, and then if there are any, uh, follow-up, it would be to recommend the, pass the resolution, authorizing and consenting to the issuance of the bonds.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this issuance of the bond? Is there anyone present who wishes to speak? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
So move.
Commissioner Grinberg, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Strand, any discussion? Commissioner Earring?
We're not on the hook if they don't pay back the bond.
Right.
Yep.
No, that's a great question, and actually, there's a, there, uh, an agreement that describes that relationship and, uh, holds us harmless completely.
Hold harmless.
Pardon me?
Hold harmless.
Hold harmless.
Maybe just add.
Said we're on the hook.
Yeah, it's a, it's somewhat of a common practice for the city to support these requests, is it not?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
It's somewhat of a, I mean, it's a.
Common practice.
It's common practice for city to, to support these types of requests for.
Yes, typically, and, and basically, it's an IRS compliance issue, basically, just to, for you to be aware that there's some construction activity going on in your community that is being used, or tax-exempt bonds are being used. So you kind of have a right to know how these things are being financed.
Plains Art Museum would be another example, years ago.
Yeah. Correct. Any other discussion? Roll call. Roll call.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Garrick?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye. Item forty-four, resolution authorizing the issuance of refunding improvement bond Series Two-oh-one-seven-C and refunding approval bond Series Two-oh-one-seven-D. Kent Costin to explain this as well.
Yes, Commissioner, the city of Fargo entered the bond market today, and with two bond issues. The first bond issue was approximately thirty-eight million dollars for reimbursement of our project costs, for our infrastructure projects. That will be financed directly by special assessments. That's the first issue. And then the second issue, the Series D issue, is a refinancing opportunity from one of our existing bond issues, and there's an ability to save about seven hundred thousand dollars on the refinancing. So staff was feeling that there's more than a degree of risk, that interest rates are going up, so we wanted to grab this last refinancing. It may be one of the last ones you'll see in the recent future. But anyway, I...
But there was a lot of interest in these bonds. You saw a lot of competition, didn't you?
Yes, and I brought our spokesperson from Springstead here to help tell that story. Very good results, better than expected. Terry, Springstead is our representative from Springstead Incorporated, she'll fill in on the results, but we are very pleased with the overall results, and we are especially pleased with our Moody's credit report that was received Thursday or Friday of last week. A very strong credit report and a strong confidence in your management team and the way the commission handles our city finances, so we're feeling good about that. I'd be happy to send that report to you directly tomorrow, too, as far as something you might want to...
I think you should send it to commissioners, it was a good report.
Yeah, yeah.
Double A one.
With that, I'll turn it over to Terry, she'll go through the results with you, and I think Eric has potentially some revised resolutions due to the fact that it was kind of late coming on the refunding transaction.
Terry?
Mr. Mayor and members of the commission, today I'm here to report the results of the sale. Bids were received in our office at ten-thirty for both bond issues, and this evening we distributed the bid tabulation. The first one I'm going to speak to is the two thousand seventeen C, and that was an amount of thirty-nine million eight-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars, and that is refunding improvement bonds. The, we received ten bids, which is a very high number, a lot of interest in your bonds. It represented forty-four financial institutions across the nation, and the low bid came from Robert Barrett and Company and its syndicate of bidders that partnered with them. The true interest rate on the far-right column is three-point-zero-four-nine-five percent, and that is for a twenty-five-year bond. The estimate a month ago was three-point-two percent, three-point-two-one, so that's about sixteen basis points less than our estimate, and of course, we've been nervous about interest rates creeping up, so in fact, it went the other way for your results today. You received a premium bid, so the resolution will reflect, instead of nine, thirty-nine million eight-hundred-and-thirty thousand, the price they paid was more than the par, and so that will be reduced to thirty-eight million five-hundred-twenty-five thousand. And you'll get the same amount, it's a combination of cash and bond proceeds, the same amount of dollars for that. The second bid is the refunding improvement refunding bonds, and this was refinanced in order to save money. And in this case, we received four bids, and it represented thirty-nine financial institutions, which is a lot of interest. The low bid in this case comes from Wells Fargo Bank, and the true interest rate in the far-right corner of their bid, the first bid is two-point-nine-seven-nine-nine percent. This is for about a twenty-one-year bond, and our estimate a month ago was three-point-zero-two-seven, so it's about five basis points less than our estimate. And what that means is instead of saving seven-hundred-and-seven thousand dollars, you'll be saving seven-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars, so that also inched up quite nicely for the results. Again, a premium bid, so the bonds are being refinanced, and instead of issuing eleven million eight-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars, the par amount of the bonds will now be eleven million three-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars. The, Kent already mentioned the credit rating report, he's very, very modest about these things, but I do think this report is glowing, and just to mention that they talk not only about your ongoing growth and diversification of the tax base, healthy reserves, and you have revenue-raising flexibility, but it's emphasized several times, strong management practices and policies, and that is something you can all be very proud of today. And again, your double A one rating was reaffirmed with a stable outlook. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Commissioner Grinberg?
Just curious, is it typical for these, for the number of bids? Is it a sign of what's going on in the market? Do you have an opinion, perspective, just...
Well, and I was just looking at your, the records that you've had for bids, and you've always had a very good showing in the market. I have a list of the history, and the number of bids, you've got ten and four this time, you had eleven and eight last time, six, six, seven, nine, eight, five, nine, I mean, they're always strong, but in particular, ten does stand out as a double-digit, whenever you get that, I think that's a big number.
Does it have Kent's name behind the reason, too?
Kent, all of you, staff, the whole city of Fargo is behind that, yes.
Great job. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved in second, is there any further discussion? Mr. Strand?
Thank you, Mayor. Maybe Mr. Costin or whomever can answer this, but if, as I understand it, if these are bonds for special, for projects that then go to reimburse the specials fund, does this also mean then that we recalculate those funds, and the seven-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollar savings are passed on to the folks paying the specials? Are their bills reduced accordingly?
No, under state law, it's mandated that they just remain the same, and it runs out till the end, and then, then you have the ability to collapse it early, perhaps, the amortization of the specials. But I mean, there is no requirement in state law, and it actually prescribed to leave it alone, let it run, because there's still uncertainty in those debt service funds. So I think your question is, do you automatically lower it to pass on those savings to the taxpayer? And the answer is no.
So if, if they get to the point where they're paid off early, do we then collapse the fund and eliminate their need to pay more when it's paid off in essence?
Well, that's a good question. The practice has been to amortize them in its entirety. There's a lot of things going on behind the scenes with the deferred assessments and other items that aren't amortizing normally, so our practice has been to run those out normally.
So I applaud the savings, but I just wish we had a way to transfer it on to the people that are, that have the onus of paying for it. So maybe the commission can look at this, or we can look at this going forward, or revisit this, but to me, that's very important. If there's that significant of a savings over three-quarters of a million dollars, that the people who are on the hook for paying those bills don't have to pay it because it's no longer, it'll be paid off early. That's just my thinking.
I gotta go somewhere.
It's for a later discussion, Kent. I think you could look into that, see what comes out of that. It's always hard, because the city still has to pay off whatever it's done, and you're right, Mr. Strand, is that if you could pass the savings on, that would be nice. Oftentimes, it's a fixed cost for the homeowner. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Garrick?
Yes.
Strand?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye. Have to go back to item forty-two. Commissioner Pepcorn would like to discuss for Broadway Parking Island. I think you're going to want one of the engineers, you want to explain what the request is about?
And I think Derek was gonna maybe have a PowerPoint, and maybe Nicole is gonna have some help, too, while she's coming up. I just, this is our downtown planning, they had the concept of these bump outs, especially on Broadway, it just seems like a great idea. And so this is just to kind of encourage the staff to start working on it. There's going to be a lot of issues as far as who gets the first opportunity to claim one of these. It's like Adopt a Highway, where you have different people, and so it's going to be Adopt a Bump Out, maybe Nicole or something like that, but especially for us to determine, so like if there's, let's say, Royal Jewelers, would they be, get the first opportunity for that bump out in front of their business, or what's the fair way to do that? And so there's just a lot of those things we kind of have to hash out, but it's, to me, it seems like a really neat idea. We have to have Ben Dow with the snow removal, make sure that it's not interfering with his work and all those kinds of things, but go ahead, Nicole.
Sure. I guess in response to this item on the agenda, there's an opportunity to present forward a couple ideas that is coming out of the Downtown and Focus Plan, and so one of them is how do we activate our bump outs, you know, so the parking islands, however you want to call them. And so here's just some examples from, I think you've seen this as part of the presentation for the Downtown and Focus Team, but just to highlight them again, is an example of, you know, can you use that space as our, as more outdoor dining and other activities happen on the street? Can you use those bump outs for activation of streets? So in Holland, Michigan, this is an example of a fire pit where people can hang out and sit in benches, outdoor dining on the top photo there. But I think this is an interesting point that the consultants brought up, is that the, what they would consider underutilized space is half an acre, the Block Nine Plaza is a quarter of an acre, and so as we think about the space in our downtown, how do we dual-purpose open space? And so just an example, they call it, the mix-it-up on Broadway is the theme, and here's an example of how it sits today. This would be in front of Dempsey's area, and then here in the subway, in front of the subway, and so they've made some renderings on how those spaces could look. So these, you might know these as parklets, is, we've used them in, I think Vinyl Taco, where we had our pilot test case. I think I got these out of order a little bit, but, you know, so how do you do temporary bump outs, make that traffic come out into the pedestrian traffic, is that dash line coming out into the island? So just some ideas that have been tossed around. We, I think Commissioner Pepcorn and I talked about this, we consider this low-hanging fruit, if you will, to start implementing the Downtown Master Plan. It's, we have many, what the Downtown Master Plan consultants are observing is there's many priorities and also conflict in policies, and so the Downtown Master Plan is an opportunity to get behind a common vision, and then think about those logistics on what it takes to implement something like that. We're in that process right now with the Downtown Master Plan. We'll be in front of you, hopefully in October, with the adoption and receiving file of the plan. We're doing a, right now, we're finalizing the drafting of the Downtown Plan and have some, a few more public opportunities for input of the final draft, and we'll be back in front of you in October.
Anything else to discuss?
So the, another thing is Liquor Control, Tony and I are on, and so we want to have more outdoor dining, and so there's some things, we have to make sure that our current rules aren't inhibiting what we're trying to promote and things like that. So there's, and there's the different committees, but just so we kind of are all, and this is just preliminary, so we just start working on this, but there's lots of details that we have to have, but I just, it's very exciting to me, and it's like, when you look, when you look down Broadway, there's Dempsey's and Royal Jewelers and all Broadway, there's lots of potential people that would be interested, I believe, and so it's exciting.
Yeah, and so maybe for the general public, real quick, you might think these are really just like, just go out and do it. And right now, we have public works to consider, our alcohol licenses to consider, the bid and the MOU and the Downtown DCP to consider, snow clearing on the street to consider, you know, smoking ordinances, all sorts of things. And so these, while it might seem really simple, and staff and Derek and, you know, they've been researching on what other cities do, so we can hopefully capture that on. So the main important thing is to understand that you support this vision, and then we'll get to work.
Very good. So you're gonna have champagne as you get your engagement ring, what you're thinking?
It's, I just think it's exciting. It's, lots of other towns, we can copy their ideas, and I just, I think it's a fun thing, and I like the concept of Adopt a Highway, everyone is familiar with that, and so I just think it's one of those good things. Thank you.
Mr. Garrick?
It'd be fun to ask businesses downtown how they would use it if it was available, and get their ideas, you know what I mean? Because they can think about more things than we can fathom, so I think...
Commissioner Garrick, you would take away parking. We gotta have parking.
We got plenty of ramps, I know.
The roll call ramp is doing very well, and some people are beginning to learn you can park in there and not worry about hour and a half parking, so, good idea. Commissioner Strand, update from the Human Relations Commission on hate speech and crimes. Do you have some spokesperson, or what are you going to do here?
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll just preface this conversation, and then I believe Barry Nelson and Rachel Hoffman might be coming forward. I've invited Hukun Abdullah to say a few words as well, but it's no secret that the issues of inclusion and diversity and acceptance and welcoming topics are front and center with our Human Relations Commission and with our City Commission and with the city of Fargo. And we, the Human Relations Commission has been working on this topic for, since last September, October, at the behest of the City Commission, but just this last Monday, in fact, their whole topic, a good chunk of their meeting was discussing what are their avenues and vehicles going forward in the moments where there are potential hate crimes or hate speech circumstances unfolding. And who would have thought the next day, the challenge, the community would be challenged with something of that nature, that really, really put Fargo on the map in a way that's not very much what we'd like to see as far as public relations and reflecting our community's spirit. I think we should commend Vince Kemp and Chief Todd, I'm having trouble talking, David Todd, for their addressing of that issue in a way that really brought some resolution, but I think it'd be nice to hear, appropriate to hear from our Human Relations Commission, not so much about these incidents, but more so about what their approach going forward is and where they're at, what they're looking for in the community, and where they see this ongoing. So I'm not sure if Barry's first, or Rachel, or whom, or both?
Don't be overly polite, come on up. Rachel, you can come up. Barry's gonna talk a long time.
I know. So she might as well stay seated. Thank you, Commissioner Strand, Mayor Mahoney, and members of the Fargo City Commission for taking up, I think, a very timely topic this evening. I'm here both as an organizer with the North Dakota Human Rights Coalition and as a member of the Fargo Human Relations Commission. And as the first role, I have been a part of a project for the past several months along with High Plains Fair Housing and Afro-American Development Association, addressing the subject of hate crime and hate speech in our communities. Our purpose was fourfold, to create awareness as to what hate crime, hate speech is, to let people know who live here that there is a recourse if they have experienced or witnessed hate crime, to develop a rapid-response support team to help people when they have been victimized, and to gather data on the extent of hate crime and hate speech in our state and communities. I'll be honest, tonight I'm bringing more questions than answers to you, but I'm hoping they're questions that we can go forward together and get some answers for. I guess the first question, is there more hate crime now, and are, or are people reporting more? And it's a good question. In the latest data, it showed North Dakota as being the second highest per capita rate of hate crime in the country, second only behind Massachusetts. That was a standing that shocked me and I think many others. Second question, in light of the most recent hate crime incidents, where a young man of Somali background was beaten while moving into his apartment, are we as a community in a position to respond appropriately? I think that's the one that rests heavily on me. Are we providing victims with information and support they need in those circumstances? Is the crime being charged out appropriately? Is our judicial system in a position to make sure that justice is being served? I do have some serious questions about all of these aspects. Another question I think we as a community need to ask ourselves, is any level of hate crime or hate speech acceptable in our community? And what do we as a community and as a state do to combat hate crime? Do we look at ordinances, state laws? And are hate crimes effective in reducing hate crime and hate speech? I had the opportunity, I guess, a challenge to meet with the victim of the beating in early July, and we were, I was looking at as a chance to model what kind of support system might be needed for people who have suffered this kind of situation. This man, you may remember in the news, was beaten and choked. He was moving with his friend and brother into his apartment. Two men came running around the corner, were shouting racial epithets at him, struck him down and started choking him. He ended up needing a ride to the ER in an ambulance, lost some time and work, and I think the most things that struck me about him was the fear, the constant fear he had. When were these guys going to be released? He already knew that they knew where he lived, so he was very fearful about what kind of retribution might come down the trail. I, going through this with him, thinking I'm a fairly savvy, smart person, realized we have a very complex system. We were very surprised to find out that one of the assailants had pled out the day after the incident and was released. This was somewhat fearful, and he only found out about it a week later. Questions about restitution weren't answered. The one person who pled out was fined two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, no restitution, no restraining order or anything. So there's a question about, are we really, truly treating these crimes appropriately? The other individual has yet to face trial. So I don't, I bring this up to illustrate what's happening. I don't want to focus on this, as Commissioner Strand said, because I think it's a far deeper and pervasive issue. Since that time and before, we've had many, many people come forward talking about incidents that they've had of harassment, of violence, and intimidation, and I think the most thing that pained me the most was sitting with a group of individuals this morning who talked about, part of the reason they don't want to even have the members of their community report these out is they're afraid. They're afraid that there might be further violence against their community, and that just pained me, as a member of a community that espouses to be safe and secure for all families, and this made me feel that there's something we need to be doing to change this so all people can live in security. So I propose that we seriously, as a community, look at hate crime, hate speech, ordinance, that we commit to a community campaign of education and awareness building, and that we stake out a position in the state passing a hate crime law, and that we strongly encourage leaders and citizens to proclaim a zero tolerance for hate and violence in our community. Thank you.
Good evening.
Thank you, Barry. Go ahead, Rach.
I have a couple of things to add on to that, as far as what the Human Relations Commission for Fargo is planning to do.
Could you introduce yourself and let everybody know your title?
Yes, my name is Rachel Hoffman, and I am the Chair of the Human Relations Commission. And so a couple of things, we plan on looking at what we can do at a city level, as far as ordinances and how that would work to help deter these kind of things from happening. Also, updating our current hate crime response plan. We do have a plan in place, but I think that does need to be kind of updated to more streamlined and have that address, you know, issues that it currently is not and have that in place. And so we will be looking at updating that, as well as continuing community conversations on the topic, as far as what people are concerned about and how we can address that. And so those are a couple of things that we're going to be looking at.
Are you having an event tomorrow night?
Um...
Is that your event, or is that sponsored by somebody else?
That is, the Human Relations Commission is cosponsoring at this point, but the main sponsor, it's North Dakota, Barry, do you want to talk on that? But that is... But that is Wednesday at 5:30, and that is just in the...
Yeah, it's the three, or the four organizations now that I mentioned, the North Dakota Human Rights Coalition, the High Plains Fair Housing, Afro-American Development Association, Fargo Human Relations Commission, I got through them all. And it's Wednesday, August 2nd, 5:30, on the grounds of, between the Fargo Civic and Fargo Library. And it is, two, two purposes. One is to support victims. I don't even mention about another man in our community who was severely attacked four years ago and continues to experience a great deal of financial stress because of that. So we want to raise this issue, maybe raise some money for victims of hate crime, and then raise that whole issue that we do not have a hate crime bill or law in our state.
I'll be out of state on vacation, but I wish you well with that event, and we do not, we really, truly have to look at our hate crime legislation, so...
Absolutely, and we do encourage all the commissioners to come if you're able. It's just right out, right outside here.
And you know, the Human Relations Commission sometimes gets tasked with trying to come up with the crisis-type of responses to things, but I think it's important you keep to your task of trying to figure out how we can work on things to solve these issues. I mean, oftentimes, as we get our police involved with things, we try to bring people back together and get some resolution, but I think the, then you've talked to Barry's fear is really hard to get rid of, and then the community gets fearful, and we always pride ourselves of being a bracing city and, and trying to get rid of feeling safe in the environment. And I especially think of children, of children that come into our community, that they feel welcome, so... Okay, anything else? Somebody else going to speak?
Yes, Mayor Hukun Abdullah, I believe, is ready to say just a few words, and...
Can you pronounce your name, so we know that John almost got it right?
Let me breathe well. So, I have a little bit of speech here, so let me, Mayor, members of the commission, good evening. My name is Hukun Abdullah, and I'm the Executive Director of Afro-American Development Association, and my organization provides services to immigrants, specifically refugees, to integrate in our communities and help them heal themselves through partnership, fostering relationship and communication, and through variety of self-sufficiency-focused programs, English class and program for youth and families and elders. I'm here today to talk about how we, as former refugees and immigrants, feel about living in this community, which we now call our home. The Walmart parking lot incident, which you probably have already heard about it, is the only tip of the iceberg, and many other similar incidents, racially motivated and otherwise do go unreported. I'm here today to talk about how it actually feels to be an African-American, or an immigrant, or a refugee, or all the above. Time has come to address the elephant in the room. As much as me and my organization have tried to bolster confidence among refugees and immigrants, and have focused on integration efforts and unity over the month, we have started realizing it has been just one-way process. The state and the city asking for how much it costs to have refugees in the communities, while it's a sensible question from the financial standpoint, it has negatively impacted our image in the community, and might also have increased the number of hostile incidents geared toward the refugees. When there were opportunities to discuss the strength refugees bring to this community, much focus was given to the cost aspect of it. The Fargo City Commission is partly to be blamed for creating this division. The only thing I remember that came out of the refugees study done by the Human Relations Commission was people and media shouting fake news and not willing to accept the presented fact. The ethnic community basically got no support from the city to improve partnership, create opportunities, and come up with a strategy focusing on the message of unity. The Walmart incident is an example of what's wrong with our community. Ethnic communities like ours are losing our battles to integrate community, and no help appears on the horizon. Fear, anger, superiority, religion, differences, and hostile media, all these negatives consumed people. As ethnic community members, we would like to see the city take butting actively uniting its residents, positive messaging, new programs to foster relationship building, being conducive to share our stories are something we can feel can be helpful. We hope the city can help us in making the city even more friendlier and provide refugees and immigrants some sort of limelight to show our contribution. Last week's incident was hard on our community, but as an immigrant, we believe in contribution. We believe in, we believe in the power of listening, healing, and solving problems together. We have hope this community will continue to grow in its ability to welcome and embrace the immigrant community. I also would like to add, the city to reflect the diversity in the community that are coming here, at least the city commission to look on, naming even the streets, the avenues, you know, like where we came from, you know, at least to show that Fargo is a diverse city and to plan ahead. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Strand, closing comments?
Mayor, I think I see another Human Relations. Abdiwali, are you looking to just say a few words? Sorry, Mayor, I'm...
Okay.
Hello, my name is Abdiwali Sharif. I present Somali Community Development, and I just wanted to say, add up what Hukun and Barry said, and I've been here for over 12 years, almost, almost half of my life. North Dakota is where I call my home right now, and the incident happened a few days ago, is, I would say is unacceptable, is a big issue. Hate crime, or threatening someone, anyone, whoever it is, is a big issue, and we expect to, you know, and to address this kind of issue when it comes. And what I'm saying is, if I quote, you know, from J.F. Kennedy, "If we cannot now end our differences, at least we can help make the world safe for diversity." So if something like this again happens, what is the city is planning to do? That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Do you want to address that?
Thank you, Mayor, and I, I guess the only thoughts in my mind, I'm guessing we all have these same desires, is that as a community, we, we have heart, and, and we're accepting of each other, we try to respect the dignity of each other, and, and whenever possible, help elevate each other to their highest level of achievement and, and fruition in their own dreams in life. So if, as much as we can stay on the high road, all of us, and as much as we can all, like, embrace a loving acceptance of each other, as much as we can tell people that's not what we want, and when we see it or experience it, to like squelch it and say, "Not me, I'm not part of this," you know, we're, we're going to be a better community for it. Last thing I'll say is, you know, I'm, I'm a firm believer that problems create opportunity, and, and these are moments to define ourselves going forward as a community and, and individually, is, is how do we, how do we, how do we get past this and, and get to the high road and stay on the high road? And how can we make this an opportunity such that when we look back at it, we go, "That was really a defining moment for us, and it was a good one," in the end, because where we've landed is a better place.
Our city is a growing city, has to embrace diversity and have people get along, and I think it's really hard, all us commissioners like people to feel safe and want people to feel this is a city which they can grow and thrive. It's hard enough to live down the reputation of the movie Fargo. Everywhere we get asked, we get asked about that Fargo, but it's really hard when you have social media put something posted across the nation that puts Fargo in a bad light. And I think all of us have to strive to put Fargo in a good light. I usually like to say Fargonians are the people that reach out to people and try to embrace them in our community. I'm always reminded of this story, somebody came up to me one time and said they really loved being in Fargo because they were an immigrant, and a person behind them paid their grocery bill because they felt they wanted to help out. And I think usually what we try to do is a hand up rather than a hand down, and I think for all of us, we want that for our children, the ability to survive, raise our families, and enjoy an environment in which you feel safe. So I hope the commission continues to work hard on this. We have some unfortunate incidents, but we're growing, and to do your point, John, is we do have that opportunity through certain things that happen, let us grow and figure a way out of it, but if we're going to survive as a city, we have to continue to grow, and growth helps us, it helps keep the tax rate down, it helps keep the environment in a good area, and brings people into the community, and young people won't come into the community if they don't feel safe and welcome, so... Last item, it's a considered purchase agreement and agreement regarding special assessment of Mount Pleasure Ag and Rental, LLP. This shouldn't take very long. Brenda, is that right? Is Brenda here? It's going to be a brief presentation, or should I take a break? It's going to be a brief presentation, or should I? Okay, okay. I have one commissioner that's begging for a break, so I'll take you on your word, this is going to be quick.
Attached, you'll see a letter from Nancy, from our Assistant City Attorney, Nancy Morris, in regards to the purchase of the Right of Way that will support the 19th Avenue North construction for the Mid-America Steel buildout, along with the corridor that will bring our sanitary sewer to the connection point for West Fargo. So we've diligently been working with the landowner on this purchase agreement and got some approval at the very end of the day Friday, so I appreciate you guys letting us bring this up today. And so attached, what you'll find is the purchase agreement, and then also today at Finance, they did request a deferral agreement. Since they are, it is still ag land, they aren't developing at this point, they had requested a deferral agreement until the point that they start developing. And so in front of you, what you'll find is the deferral agreement along with the purchase agreement, and if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
This is, and we have our bids ready for 19th, so if we approve this tonight, they can move forward with the bids on 19th Avenue, is that correct?
Correct, and those did come, we had a very good price with those, so we would like to get that moving ahead.
Commissioner Garrick, we want to get this line into the ground to West Fargo, so I'll move to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Grinberg, Pepcorn, one of you got it? I'll leave that to your data. Any other discussion?
Can I just, real quick comment? To me, I'm not comfortable when we get stuff at the last minute, because it's, but this is a unique situation, and even though it's a deferral, once 19th Avenue is going to get paved, this, this deferral will not last very long, and so that's, that's why I will support it.
Any other discussion? Roll call, vote, please.
Garrick?
Yes.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye. Any other business? Is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Adjourn, thank you.